Okay, the annual meeting of the school district of Weathersfield, Vermont is now in order. I'll read the first warning. The legal voters of the Weathersfield School District, Weathersfield, Vermont, are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Weathersfield School in Escutney, town of Weathersfield, Vermont, on Saturday, February 29th, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. in the morning to transact any business not involving voting by Australian ballot or any voting required by law to be by ballot. Such meeting so started shall be adjourned Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020. Further, the legal voters of the Weathersfield School District are further notified and warned to meet at the Martin Memorial Hall in Escutney, Vermont, on Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, at 10:00 in the afternoon to act on any business involving voting by Australian ballot or any voting required by law to be by ballot. Polls open at 10:00 a.m. and close at 7:00 p.m. A couple of beginning things. First of all, just a note to everyone, there's only water as liquid to drink or whatever in the gym, so please, if you have anything other than water, please take it out. Okay, at this time, I'd like to introduce the chairman of the school board, Sean Whalen, and he will introduce the rest of the people sitting here, the board and other staff members, and then lead us into pledge of allegiance. Sean?
Thank you, Peter. I am Sean Whalen, and I will allow the rest of the board and members to introduce themselves, please.
I'm Susan Hindinger.
Kristen Brusel.
Jackie Antonovich.
Anne Marie Redmond.
Jean Marie Oakman, principal of Weathersfield.
David Baker, superintendent Windsor Southeast.
Ed Connors, please.
And we always begin our meetings with something that we all agree on, which is our allegiance to the flag and the republic. Please join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good people of Proctor Library, I know Judy Topolski is back there, working on lunch for us at 12:00. So we have two hours, we're starting on time, and we've got to get through by 12:00, so let's get right along. I do want to thank, before I forget, somebody, well, some people who are very important in making all this happen, the people who make it go, and that's our custodians, and they've worked especially hard every time, they work for all of our meetings, and for a day like this, they do so much to have the school ready. Thank you, Roland, thank you, Kelly, and thank you, Brian Woodbury.
And Teresa.
Teresa, where's Teresa?
And I would never leave out my favorite, in a way. So I make light of it, but they make it go for us, they do, you can see our school, how sparkling it is, and I just thank them for how much they do for us. And I would also like to thank BJ Esti for everything, and she's going to be helping us today as well.
Wonderful.
So let's begin.
Okay, just a quick one here, formality, there's several non-residents here that may be addressing the meeting this morning, I'd like to introduce them.
Sir, probably the right one? Tell them, just get a little closer to it, too.
Is this one working?
Can you hear me?
Just get right close to it, Peter.
It's better.
Okay, the non-residents that may be speaking this morning are superintendent Dr. David Baker, principal Jean Marie Oakman, business manager Ed Connors, director of student services Karen Woolsey, and the curriculum coordinator Angela Ledoux. So with your okay, we'll allow them to speak as they so choose. Okay, starting out with Article 1, to act on the reports of the school district officers for the period from July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2019. Do I hear a motion? Motion to accept would be in order.
But did you ask these folks?
And a second by John Arison? Okay, is there any discussion on the article, any questions on the reports? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a voice vote. All those in favor of approving Article 1 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Moving down to Article 2, to see if the school district will vote to authorize the school board to borrow money in anticipation of taxes to meet the requirements of the school district for the ensuing year, and to authorize the execution and delivery of notes or orders to the school district. A motion to accept would be in order.
Snow vote.
Roger Newhall. And second by? Okay, motion has been made and seconded, is there discussion on the article, on Article 2? Okay, any question on Article 2? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of approving Article 2 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article 2 is approved. Article 3, it's interesting, I was always taught in school not to do a run-on sentence, but this one here is about as run-on as you can get, so I'll read it, though. Shall the voters of the Weathersfield School District authorize the school board to enter into a 25-year lease with Weathersfield School Community Solar, LLC, to lease school property located at 135 Schoolhouse Road to Weathersfield School Community Solar, LLC, to install and operate a solar-operated electric generating system pursuant to the terms of the solar lease agreement and solar net metering credit agreement negotiated by the school board? Do I hear somebody make that motion?
So moved by?
And second by? Jackie, up the right? McKeewen, okay. Motion made and seconded. Okay, I'd like to introduce our, start out, what's his, yeah, what did I, no, here, here we go, Joel Stettenheim from Norwich Solar will make a presentation on this issue.
I don't believe Joel is actually planning to present on the issue, but he's here to answer.
Oh, okay, okay. Then you want to?
I'm having to open the discussion. Joel is the president and co-founder of Norwich Solar, which is a company with whom we are contracting to enter into a net metering agreement by which we will save 15% off of our solar bill over the next 25 years. What's at issue today is whether we will agree to lease the roof of the school to have that solar array built here, and it's something we've been working on all year, that's well supported by our teachers and students who are very much looking forward to the educational opportunities of having that power generated here in the school with displays showing minute by minute how much is being generated, tremendous opportunities in STEM learning, and it's also well beloved by people who like to save money. And in our first year, this agreement is projected to save $5,500, and that will escalate over the course of the contract. So I guess I would open the floor up to questions.
Question in the back, Ginger?
What amount of money are we speaking about? It just seems funny, I thought it would be explained and voted on tomorrow.
You mean?
I'm sorry, Tuesday.
On Tuesday, that it would be an Australian ballot? You mean, why, is it a floor vote?
Yes.
David, can you speak to that?
Yeah. Can everybody hear me with this microphone? Yeah, it's a good question, and essentially, we just paid attention to our legal counsel, our legal counsel said that because the only items that are voted on by Australian ballot are the election of your school directors and your final budget, and all other matters of consideration have been historically, as he went back and reviewed it, including things like moving money from the bus fund into, that was a floor vote, he said, you might as well just do it on the floor, it's a little bit more efficient and effective. We could have done it either way, you could have done it on the floor, you could have done it, but his recommendation was to do it on the floor.
I think that her question also, when she was asking about cost, so you were curious as to how much this is going to cost the school, it's not going to cost the school anything, Norwich Solar has secured all the funding for building it, this is just a vote on whether or not we let, it'll be leased the roof to them.
And that lease would be for the sum of $1?
Question in the back?
So there is no cost to the taxpayers as far as this project goes?
There is no cost.
Correct, Norwich Solar has offered to, as part of the net metering agreement, they've handled all the engineering costs and all the installation costs, so there's no cost to the taxpayer of installing it on the roof.
I would add, though, to your question, that there are, built into the contract are options in year six of the agreement and in year 25. An option in year six is that we would have an opportunity to acquire the, to purchase the system for ourselves at a rate far less than what it costs to build, and after 25 years, we would have the option to either have the company take it down at no cost to us, or we could take over ownership of it if that's what we decided to do in 25 years.
Now, with this project going up here, how much of this is actually going towards the use within the school? I mean, here, can people use the microphone, please?
That's a good point, yeah. Do you repeat your question then, for microphone?
I.
Bring it to you, hold on.
I'll wait. As far as the power that's generated from here, how much of it is actually going to school use instead of going out to neighboring states, I guess? It's all here. For the school, of course, when school's not in session and we're using less power, some of that will go back onto the grid, save during the summer, yes?
Is the net metering agreement with Green Mountain Power?
Let's give them a mic, please. Yeah, get your name, please.
Is the net metering agreement with Green Mountain Power?
Yes.
And your name, please?
Scott Woll.
So the question was, is the net metering with Green Mountain Power? Is that what you're saying?
A second, Peter has to recognize me.
Is that answered?
I did, it is.
Okay, okay, other questions? John Arison?
There's some in the back.
Yeah.
The solar system's going on an existing roof, who's responsible for this roof that's under the system and possible damage when it's being installed, or at the end of the contract when they take them off?
Joel, I'd like you to take that question, please.
It's a very good question, so we're doing an extensive engineering analysis, and in fact, it's a state-run building permit, nothing can happen that isn't structurally sound. So we've already done our, what we call sort of 60% design, and as part of that, we have an outside engineering firm, Harris Engineering, doing an analysis of the roof, we approved it, now we're in a position where we can submit for the state building permit, that is our own private independent analysis, including our engineering review, if there's any adjustments that come from that, then that will sort of finalize the tweak, you know, that will become the end of the 90% design to fulfill. Also, what's advantageous with this is that you actually have an ideal roof for this, it's a standing seam roof, and so then the attachments are just lamps that go on that standing seam, so there's no roof penetration that's associated with this. Also, we work with the roofing contractor, in this case with Melanson, and as is a standard sort of matter, of course, they sign off, and that means that their warranty remains in effect. So the warranty that was there before, they approved the additional solar panels, and if anything, it actually ends up helping your roof because most of the degradation of the roof happens with the UV radiation, and so there are panels, they're actually absorbing that radiation. So the long-term impact to the roof will be beneficial, and I think there's also a question at the end, as we've mentioned, the obligation is just to take the system down and go away, although I did want to clarify that these panels are warranted for 25 years, and that means that at the end of 25 years, their warranty will still be producing 80% at least of the power they did at the beginning, and so people anticipate the panels to work for up to 35 years, and so at the end of that 25 years, the person who owns the system, right, and they're the ones who have to pay to put it up and do all of that, their obligation is just to take it down and go away, and so they don't really want to do that, that's a cost, but then they'd rather actually just give it to the school. And so then, if the school wants to, they can just make the system go away, but rather, it can then actually take over ownership of the system for nothing, and so then all of the, right now, the net metering agreement saves 15%, but at the end of that 25 years, if the school wanted to take it over, then that would become 100% savings, right, because you'd be giving away your power. Other questions? All the power, the size of the array is structured to basically cancel out the school's annual electricity bill, so that size, to meet the size of the school needs.
I don't feel that's the direct answer to the question, who's responsible if there's a problem with the roof?
So the system owners, so they have an obligation as part of the solar array, although, as I said, the roof is warranted, and so that roof warranty remains in effect. If something, if there was a problem that was caused to the school roof because of the solar array, that would be the solar array owner's responsibility, but the warranty of the roof remains in effect, so if there's any leak or anything with the roof, the underlying warranty from the roofer is the responsible party for.
When does the warranty on the roof expire?
I think that the warranty for the roof is, I think it's 50 years, but it might be 25 years, it's a fairly new roof.
So your system's going to be on after the warranty expires?
Not necessarily, if you want it to go away.
It's already 15 years old.
But if anything, the array is only going to be extending the light of the roof, but my understanding is that the warranty for the roof is, as I said, it could be potentially 35 or 50, if I don't know, it's definitely not going to be expired.
What's the power capacity of the solar cells? How would you generate it?
Yeah, so the systems are sized on the DC side, which is not what goes into, there's two sizes, there's the DC side, it's about 230 kilowatts, 230,000 watts, which is the amount of power that that produces is about equal to the school's annual power bill. The AC side, which is what gets plugged into the grid, is 150 kilowatts. I think the other thing that's helpful to understand, and I'm happy to help provide information about the net metering agreement and the savings to the school, that's already been agreed to, and so the question is just whether we get to put it on the roof or we have to put it someplace else. And so one of the things that we think is advantageous, as was mentioned, in terms of putting it on the roof, is that what we've done, we've worked with a lot of schools, and one of the things that we do is we try to maximize educational opportunities that exist with these arrays, and there's a lot that you can do throughout all of the grades, and so, you know, you can take it from just kind of simple, like what's being produced each year, up to the level, there's actually data that's available down to almost the panel level, and this array will have different orientations, so for some of the more advanced classes, they analyze what's happening over the course of the day, over the course of the year, there's a lot that can be done in terms of understanding what's going on in terms of the science and technology, there's also a lot of stuff you can do in terms of sort of policy, so we've worked with a lot of schools to integrate these arrays into the curriculum, and there's a real value to what we've found also with the kids in terms of being able to actually see the panels on their roof, and take ownership, like this is our array, is producing our power, there's kind of a sense of pride and ownership, and as I said, with the science curriculum, there's a lot that can be done, that we've done with a number of schools.
We have a line ready to go.
Okay. Dave Fuller?
My name is Dave Fuller, and I've learned a great deal about this in the last couple of days. I am challenging this article, the way it is written, as a disclosure of a finance, you can read the words, it says pursuant to the terms of the solar lease agreement negotiated between, by the school board. I conferred with the town clerk a moment ago, and the town actually has a voting policy about financial terms like this, and the superintendent just acknowledged that this was a dollar, which, $1, which is a financial agreement for a lease. We do vote by this, by Australian ballot, so after I get done talking about what I want to talk about here, I'm going to make a motion to table this, because I do want to see this project, and it's probably going to shock a lot of people. What I don't support is a $5,000 savings on a potential $50,000 savings, and I learned, for instance, that this is a 150-kilowatt system, the town has signed an agreement to put a 500 KW system in on the ground, that those, and two of them actually, both of them seem to be up in the air a bit, but we're a bit different. This one here, I learned, would actually provide all the power for the building, which I think this gentleman just disclosed. Therefore, I think it might make economic sense to buy the thing, and here's why. I learned that we spent $50,000 a year in power here at this building, and in 10 short years, depending on what GMP decides, to keep raising the rates, it could be eight years, it would be paid for by our bond that would be floated. It would be a neutral thing, if you just think about it by math, the cost of the system would then negate the cost of our power entirely, so why take a baby step? I learned that potentially, there may be an issue with the roof, my son-in-law is the roofing contractor here in the area, he says it matters, he just completed 100,000 square foot hockey arena in Connecticut. It matters that we absolutely know the material that's on that roof, the thickness, the gauge of the steel that was done, and the fasteners that attached it to the roof, not just about the sheeting underneath, which I happen to see pictures of, that is particle board, and I, as a farmer, have a problem with particle board, because any leaking means that it quickly rots away over the plywood. So I don't necessarily believe that it's going to be the obligation of the solar company or the installer to guarantee the roof, I think the opposite, the roof guy guarantees the roof. He doesn't make any guarantees, he couldn't envision that you're going to put something on the roof to make that stress a little bit more on the roof. The question I had was like a farmer, another question I had was like a farmer, I don't know where the location of the roof of the solar array is going to be, but if anybody, did anybody set up like a meter of the sun to somehow measure? They did, okay, great. And somebody would have to anticipate, because we don't own a lot of property around here, the tree growth that may inhibit that, and I'm seeing shaking heads, so that's really good. I'm making a motion at this moment to table this floor vote until such a time that we can get, and which I seemed to have just gotten, to clarify whether or not this has to be put on Australian ballot. This, to me, says that this is a financial agreement, and it says so pursuant to the terms of the agreement negotiated by the school board, that's finances, and the superintendent has admitted that it was for $1.
David, this is really Peter's fault.
Okay, I'm making a motion to table, so.
Okay, a motion has been made to table, and that's a non-debatable motion, so we have to vote on that now, and if that motion is defeated, then we would continue with the discussion. So at this point, we're ready, we have to vote. All those in favor of tabling this?
Nobody's seconded.
I'm sorry, yeah, rewrite, is there a second to that?
Oh, seconded.
Okay, second by Darren Salding. Okay, all those in favor of tabling this motion to a later date, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, who would like to continue, essentially continue the discussion, invoke today. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it appears that we, the motion is defeated, and we'll continue the discussion at this point. Okay, Paul, I believe you had a question?
Hi, Paul, just a quick question, you talked about all the energy and all the power going back to the school, so everything completely from the solar panels go back to the school, nothing goes to the states or anything else, and if that is the case, then Norwich is taking care of everything and paying for everything and doing everything, what's the incentive for Norwich to do this? And, two-part question, sorry, the second part is, we talked about tonight's vote, or today's floor vote is only for putting it on to the roof, people already gone into contract and stuff sorts, for this net metering and stuff, so it's just a matter of where the solar panels are going to go, where else would they go? We have a parking lot, we barely have enough sports fields for stuff, so I'm curious where else, what the plan would be, since we're running a contract.
Great, thank you, so the question about the power, so the amount of power that this array produces over the course of the year is equal to essentially the amount of power that the school uses over the course of the year. As was noted, that during the summer, the solar array will be producing power when the school isn't necessarily using as much power, that power goes back into the grid, and it feeds sort of the local area. So what it does, in addition to meeting the power needs of the school on an annual basis, it also helps improve the power quality in this area, so the times when the school is not using that power directly, the extra power goes onto the grid and is used by the local community, and it provides benefits in terms of the frequency variation, the voltage stability, all of that, so that's an advantage that comes in terms of just the power qualities that exist. And then, sorry, what was your second question?
Your incentive?
Oh, the incentive, so as was identified, just in terms of how these systems work, the cost of the solar array is provided by someone else, and part of, a key part that people may know for solar array now is that there's a 30% tax credit that comes through the federal government, but that's a tax credit, and so the only way that you can take advantage of that tax credit is you can have a tax bill, and so the school, so this also comes, the question was raised in terms of why didn't the school buy it now, is that the school doesn't have a tax bill, and so that's just lost money. So the value of these solar arrays includes the tax credit and then the fact that it's producing some power. So the people who own these arrays, part of their incentive is they get to have the tax credit, and so they take on all the cost and all the burden and all the responsibility of building and owning the solar array, in part because they get some income from the array, and then also because they get the tax credit. Now, if the school wants to buy the array, which is a great long-term option, so it gets it at the end of 25 years basically for free, but the school has the option of buying it sooner, and it could use a bond to do that, and that's very attractive, because the bond is going to be less than you can take for most, any other kind of like mortgage or loan, so it's a great idea to think about buying it, you can't buy it, excuse me, before the sixth year, the first time you can buy it is the sixth year, just because the IRS has rules that the people own it, have to own it for a certain period of time before they can sell it. But because that price that you pay, and all the price for these systems include those tax benefits, and at the end of six years, those tax benefits go away, the school gets to buy the solar array for something that's probably, just six years down the road, 60 to 70% of what it was right now. So it's much more, no school, we've worked with many, many, many schools, and none of them ever buy it, just because it doesn't make any financial sense right at the start. But you can buy it at year six, and what's great about that is that you seem to have the system going, you know, you can decide whether you want to do it, you can plan for it. If you don't want to do that, and you just want to keep the 15% savings, that's also fine, all the operations, the maintenance, everything like that is the responsibility of the people who own the solar array.
The second part was, in this town, where?
Oh, yeah, sorry. So then, that is a complication. So we, as a company, you know, find places where we can build solar arrays. And last fall, we were looking at, you know, whether the school wanted to do it on its roof, or one of the places that we found where you could do it on another roof, someone else's roof, or on the ground. Those sites have been taken up. We'll have other sites that'll come out, you know, sometime during this year, where we could put it someplace else. But the plan has always been to put it on this roof, so there would be a delay where we would try to find someplace else to put it, if we couldn't put it on the roof. It's advantageous, again, in terms of putting it on the roof, also in terms of savings, is that the building permit, it takes about a month. So we could be building this within sort of a month, and some of the best production happens in the spring, so the savings to the school, if we put it on the roof, could start right away this spring.
Darren Spalding. Mr. Fuller took some questions, so we won't be playing too long. I fully support solar, but as fire chief, there's a lot of unanswered questions. I would like to personally see the engineering report, because when this school was built, the former town manager, Larry Mullane, when Jim Mullane took over, he asked me to be here one to two days a week, going through the process of building the school. I know the trusses are made out of two-by-fours, some are two-by-six, and they're put together with gussets. And anyone that doesn't know about gusset plates, in 20 to 30 minutes, they fail, roof is blocked. Now, we're going to be sending firefighters in there if there's a fire in the school. So I have concern with that for firefighters' safety. This, I know the best practices for solar companies are not always the best practice. You can drive around through the town of Weathersfield and see houses that have solars on their roof that have not met the code. Once a year, we have the state fire training council come to our station. We've done it the last two years, we've had over 300 people and firefighters come in there. When you put up a solar array, they are supposed to be two to three feet down from the peak of the roof. If you ride around town, they're not. And two to three feet in from the side, they're not. And the reason for that is, because when we throw up a ladder, they have hooks on it. So we throw the hooks on, in the middle of the night, it's tough to see, we're supposed to do a 360. The hooks go through the solar, and then people can let you go. When the building collapses, the solars are still alive. And I don't know if people understand this, but the moonlight charges the solar panel. And our lights, our scene lights and our red lights charge the panels. And you can also find us, if you go Google, rooftop solar panels are great for the planet, but terrible for firefighters. The training chief of the state of Vermont has a good article on that. And also, state of New Hampshire. Manchester, New Hampshire, had a house fire. They went to go trench the roof, and trench the roof to get the poisonous gas out of there to smoke, because of the solar panels. So this is something I just think we really need to think about, and since we haven't seen the engineers report on the fire side of it, I have a tough problem with it right now. I'd love to see it somewhere else other than the roof. We don't know the thickness of the roof right now on the standing scene. So those are some of the questions that I have, and I want to know if you can answer some of them, please.
Absolutely, and those are actually very good questions, and that's part of, as I said, the state review that goes, part of the building permit. Part of their review is to ensure that there are the proper setbacks, and then meeting all of the state fire codes. I'm happy, I actually have with me, to share with you what is our current design that includes those setbacks and that anticipates what we know will be part of the state review. We also have, I can show you the engineering report, but I'm happy to get additional information if you know details about it. He did go in and look at the underlying structure to ensure that it is capable of sort of holding up the weight of the panels. It's also good, just from the structural sort of side, to understand that the weight of the solar panels is very small relative to the weight of the snow load. So it's, the structural sort of load put on by the solar panels is not significant at all. But certainly ensuring, and I will admit that they're not by us, but there certainly have been installations that have happened that have not met the code, but this would be fully reviewed as part of the permitting process to ensure that it is meeting the code, and that those are best practices in terms of ensuring that fire and safety is observed in terms of those situations where you wouldn't be taking on the roof. So I'm happy to, as I said, we are in the process now of preparing that, now that we have, we actually just got it yesterday, the engineering report, and I'm happy to, I'd be pleased to have your input in terms of any additional information that's not in that engineering report, although I think it's, I think you'd be satisfied and find it satisfactory. But we're in the process now of preparing the building permit that will go to the state, and once again, I'd be happy to have any sort of information if you have or input in terms of what you think might be the state review process to ensure, in terms of the code for firefighters' safety.
But you don't have that with you today?
No, I can look, yeah, I do, actually.
Okay, yeah, if I could get that, that'd be great.
Yep, I'd be happy. And like I said, we are just in the process, though, of putting together that building permit. So we'd love to have any additional input that you would have at this point, before we submit that sub-permit.
I believe we have another question?
My name is Robin Tindall. Most of my knowledge about solar comes from, I worked with Hypertherm, I work in environmental sustainability there. Actually, Paul, who just spoke earlier, he works for Hypertherm as well. And in terms of looking at renewable energy and how we've considered it as a business, this is actually the exact setup that we've most seriously considered. And one of the things that's interesting about it is that we were interested for some of the same reasons, in terms of taking advantage of that tax benefit. So as a for-profit business, we would have enough cash to spend at Hypertherm to own outright and pay for upfront a full solar array on our roof, but because we're a 100% employee-owned company, we don't pay federal taxes, and therefore, we wouldn't benefit from that 30% tax break, which was just spoken about. So in that way, we're just like the school. So it's a great mechanism to be able to get something at that much of a discount. And I believe Dave Fuller was suggesting that we should also consider just outright ownership. So outright ownership, you need to have that cash flow in place, you have to be in a position to spend that cash, and overall, that might be the best thing financially, but you have to have the cash, and you also have to be willing to swallow the fact that there's a 30% discount out there, and that you're not going to get the benefit of that 30% discount. One of the other things we considered at Hypertherm, in terms of ownership, even if we could afford ownership, even if we wanted to give up on the tax break, we would then own those panels, we'd own the wires, we'd own the inverters, we'd own the operations and the maintenance of all of that. And while we have 15 to 20 full-time facilities people on our staff at Hypertherm, they have a lot to do with all of the buildings and operations that they have to deal with every day, just as our facilities people here, in our school, and at the SU have to deal with. So to have to become an expert on running and maintaining a set of solar panels, we didn't feel was really in our wheelhouse. So that was another benefit of just leasing the roof space and having somebody else own it. So I just wanted to put that out there, that a for-profit business that has really looked into this a lot sees all of the same benefits that the school is seeing, and that, yes, we might save a little bit less money over time, but that's the price you pay for not having to outlay that cash upfront.
Next question?
Ginger Limburg. I totally support the solar. Jim and I went this way about seven years ago. My question is, we have batteries, and so when the power goes out, we don't even know. Are batteries included in this, or is that something that's not feasible, not necessary? That's my question.
Thank you, it's a great question. So batteries are contemplated as this, although they aren't part of this initial package. So Green Mountain Power is still sort of figuring out what the incentives are, the support are for batteries for systems of this size, that there's a lot of energy, can we start laughing? Support at the state level to make that happen. And part of that is just makes the grid perform better, but another thing that would be sort of ideal, and there's talk of having specific incentives for it, is that for an installation such as this, this can be an ideal emergency center. So during those times when the grid goes down, or there's islanding, as we'd expect to happen, that's happened with Irene later in the future, the school would be an ideal location in which there could be power as an emergency shelter for those who are impacted during situations like that. So some people might be fine, but there are going to be people in the community who are going to need power, who are going to need a place to go, and this could be an emergency shelter, and that's part of what's being contemplated at the state level in terms of getting the support for storage. So it's been part of the discussion. The policies that actually allow it's immediate implementation are sort of ongoing now, so it's not part of this current proposal, but it's, once the system is here, then it can be added as those things come online. But trying to make it part of an emergency shelter is certainly being contemplated, because it would be ideal.
Other questions?
Patrick O'Connor. I have two specific questions. The first one is, what is the projected lifespan of these panels? We know they don't last forever, and they have to be handled as hazardous waste when they die.
So it's a great question in terms of the life of the panels. As I mentioned, they're warranty for 25 years, and that warranty means that at the end of 25 years, they're anticipated to produce at least 80% of what they were producing at the beginning. Their lifetime is anticipated to be 35 or potentially 40 years. There was a time when people, sort of five years ago, when solar panels were made up of somewhat more exotic materials, some of which were toxic. Solar panels now, all of them are silicon, which is basically sand. So the panels are, the panels do not have any sort of toxic elements, they're made up of aluminum, and glass, and silicon. So at the end of their lifetime, the panels are taken down, and they're going to be highly recyclable, but the lifetime for them is anticipated to be about 35 to 40 years.
The second one's a little more complex, and I'm going to use the word credit, but not in a financial term. The federal government grants credit for solar arrays under renewable power things. What we run, I've been running into is, you build, I'm not pinning you down on this, but a large array is built somewhere, and the credits for the renewable power are sold out of state. So we build a huge setup here, but Massachusetts gets the credit for it. And is this going to be involved in any way in this project?
The answer is no. So that was a change in the net metering rules that happened in 2016. So what we're talking about now is what's called the renewable energy credits, which are the solar greenness of it. And so now, all net metering systems, well, you don't have to, because there's a very, very strong financial disincentive not to, but, so everyone now, under the net metering program, the renewable energy credits go to the state as part of the state leading Vermont's green energy goals. The renewable energy credits are not sold out of state for this system, and that's the case of virtually 100% of the net metering systems that have come online since it was changed in 2016.
I'm Sarah DeGioia, and I have just two questions, which is, one, what if the feds get rid of these tax credits? 25 years is a long time, and so what happens when those tax credits are, as far as the lease goes, and the investors are eligible? I ain't never been grandfathered. And two, worst case, Sarah, what happens if the school closes within 25 years? What happens if this is no longer there, which, you know, as you know, the consolidation and things like that, we know, right? So I'm just wondering about those two issues.
Yeah, so the first question, the tax credits matter about kind of what's going on now. Like, so for this system, it is part of the current tax credit. So actually, the tax credits are changing, so last year, they're 30%, you know, this year, they're going to be 26%. So that's another thing to keep in mind, is that the 15% discount that the school is getting now takes advantage of the fact that this system is grandfathered, and so people who own them will get the 30% tax credit from last year. And so the discounts that are going to be available going forward are going to go down as that tax credit goes down. But the tax credits won't impact the school at all, because the people who own the system get their tax credits, they use them up immediately, and then after that period, when they sell it to the school, the tax credits aren't part of it anymore. And in terms of the school changing, what's great about the way in which Green Mountain Power has their net metering program set up, is that the output from a solar array can be applied to any bill that is within Green Mountain territory. So in what I would think of as the unlikely event that the school moves to another facility or something happened, the power from this array could just be switched to be credited to meters that were, I guess, no longer on the school property, but to something else.
Other questions?
Could you hand it to a question?
Matt Keniston, for you, and this has been tremendously informative, and thank you very much. Could you clarify for Darren Spalding, that all solar installations need to have a shut-off at the building, so that if you approach something that's on fire and has a solar array on the roof, you shut it off, the grid connected, that completely shuts down the system, except for the DC at the top?
Thank you, that's a good part, and I'm actually happy to show, as part of the design package that we have now, it shows the electronics that are at the, or on the side of the building that are being accessible from ground level, so that if there were, the event of anything happening, then the system would go down, and so that it would be safe as part of meeting the code for, if there were some events in which firefighters had to be on it, but that there is this DC disconnect at ground level to shut it down, so that it wouldn't be locked in the event of people having to get on the roof in terms of a fire.
Thank you, Peter. I just had something to say to Sarah's question, that the changing landscape on the federal tax credits was something that motivated the board to go at this as quickly as we could, to get them while they're here.
Other questions? Down the back?
I've been in solar a little bit, in this area for a while, and Jim, Ginger, Limburg, no, and I think I worked for you for a while, really. My only concern is, has to do with supply chain, because of this new pandemic that's starting to arise, the mood is to shut down long trade with China, and we know that most of the solar panels are coming from there, so I'm hoping that you have enough stock, you're going to need about 400 to do this job.
Great, so that's a good question. So yes, the solar panels for this project are actually already in the US. So as I said, part of the way in which these projects grandfathered that tax credit is that they spend a certain amount in last year. And so the panels for this project were secured at the end of last year, and they're sitting in a warehouse in the US right now, which again, assuming we proceed and can put it on the school roof, is all set, but there are some, in terms of about description for panels that you'll be doing for projects in the middle or late in the year that are not getting in the US.
Question over here, I think, Roger? Yeah?
I just want to know, how many panels are you planning on putting up? And how much does each panel weigh?
So each panel only weighs a few pounds, and the total, it's about, so these panels, so as I said, the total system size is about 230 kilowatts, and each panel is about a third of a kilowatt, it's sort of 360 watts. So it's around 600 some odd panels that would be going on the roof. But as I said, what's good in terms of the, sort of the engineering analysis that goes on, the weight that's associated with the solar panels is a small fraction of the snow load, so these roofs are built for capacity in excess of the snow load, and it's certainly part of the calculation to ensure, I mean, we've had We've had some older buildings. We looked at actually doing solar on the roof of the hockey rink in Hartford. And that was a building whose roof was sort of right at the margin in terms of structurally, some of the Butler buildings, same type of thing. They're just sort of built to be right at that margin in which then becomes a question. But for this roof, as in the vast majority of roofs, there's far in excess because of the snow load for the weight associated with the panels.
Other questions? Aaron?
Aaron Spaulding, just one more question. I want to follow up with Matt Kennison's question. I understand about the disconnect at the bottom. What about the solar panels up on the roof producing electricity? Are they still going to produce electricity when you shut the disconnect off at the bottom? That's, that's the problem of the fire services having, is that there's no way to shut the power off on the, on the solar panels on the roof if they fall down? I asked a question that shutting the disconnect off at the bottom does not kill the power being generated on top of the roof, correct?
No, so the panels, when the panels are, the shut-off that happens there means that the power is...
Do you need his mic, please?
Yeah, he needs the mic.
So we can go through the wiring diagram. I'm happy to go through it. But the idea is that when it's shut off, that's precisely to control that situation so that when the, when the system is shut down, then the panels are not active. And so that there isn't a danger in terms of there being electric for the firefighters.
Is that something new? Because I have talked to fire departments and fire chiefs throughout the state of Vermont. And that disconnect at the bottom shuts the power going out, but the panels on the roof are still live.
Yeah, I'm happy to go through the wiring diagram with you. But that is part of the making sure that they're safe, is that the panels that are on the roof, it's not just that they're not putting power into the grid. The point is that they're not producing power so that they're safe for firefighters at the time. But let's, yep.
Other questions? More here?
I'm Tim Austin. I'm the emergency management coordinator for town. And one of the things the town may not be aware of is we actually do not have an emergency shelter in the town of Weathersfield. So if the power goes out, everybody's going to be cold, including this building. So one of the benefits certainly would be for battery backups and to make this into an emergency shelter. Because as the climate change, a lot of people don't seem to think, it's going to happen, but I do. The storms get worse. We're going to be starting to see times where this town is going to be in dire straits with people that have no power. And we need a place for people to go.
If you got in the corner? Back in the corner there?
Rhonda Fairbrother? My question is, I was under the impression there isn't a battery backup? So even if the power grid goes down, there wouldn't be power here anyway with the solar panels? Is that my understanding?
You're correct that the system as it's currently proposed doesn't have storage. But that's connected to the fact that while there are strong programs in place now for residential battery storage, battery storage associated with systems of this size is something that's still being worked out. There's a lot of discussion at the legislature and with utilities that we want to add storage as part of the grid for any number of reasons. And those programs are being sort of implemented as we speak. And this would be an ideal location to put in storage as soon as those programs are sort of implementing. So having the system here creates that possibility that as soon as the incentives that would support their, we could do a sort of a base amount of storage now. That would be more sort of at a large scale sort of home installation, right? So there would be something, right? You could keep critical systems going if there were, you know, pieces associated with the heating system that needed some amount of electricity. So there could be something of that scale. And then something that we would want, that would really be much larger, that would have allowed to be sort of like an emergency shelter for the community, that's something that's part of, sort of the incentives are being put in place. And once the system is, with the system being here, that's something we can pursue in the future.
So if that was implemented, would that battery, large bank of battery storage have to be inside the school? Or could it be outside away from the school?
Yeah, I mean, the location of the battery bank would be something that would be determined just in terms of what made sense in terms of where to sit it electrically. So it wouldn't necessarily have to be inside the school and just be part of the engineering permitting process for that.
Other questions up here in the back?
Fred Koalik. So I have a, I have a question concern, I guess, about this whole assembly right now with, with the solar array. On one side, we're hearing that there is battery backup for this building. On the other side, we're hearing, no, it's not, but there's a possibility for it. There's other things that are going on with, you know, whether or not this should be a floor vote, whether or not it should be an Australian ballot. Seems a lot of this has been put forward without proper information. Me personally, I'm kind of going with what Dave Fuller said earlier, that this should go with an Australian ballot. And I'd like to see more of a hand vote or a standing vote on this whole topic instead of moving forward with just a yea or nay. It seemed to be too close for this entire project to say, you know, we had a good vote.
So again, just a couple of things. So the one is, there have been, maybe the school board wants to talk to you about just how much there had been public discussion about this, yeah, we definitely have.
So just to be clear, Article III is there because there is a state law, a very obscure state law, that our attorneys, when looking at the lease to put the array on the roof, noticed this clause that anytime a municipality leases something for more than three years, then that municipality, meaning the school board in this case, needs to get permission from the voters. You're not voting on the lease. You're simply, if you look at the article, authorizing the school board to enter into this lease, which is going to be longer than three years. And so that's why the attorney, you know, when they were looking at the final, not the net metering agreement, the net metering agreement is separate. That's what establishes the rate you're going to get in return on the power that's produced by the array. And that array can be located anywhere. The school board felt, for educational purposes and a variety of reasons, they wanted to put it on the roof. And so when we went to enter into that agreement, that's when the attorney found this obscure law, you know, that basically states that any lease agreement for more than three years has to be voted on. So then I asked the attorney, should that be Australian ballot? Or should that be floor vote? And he said that because it's only for authorization, you know, to extend the lease longer than three years, it could be either. And so, you know, he suggested you do it as floor vote for efficiency purposes and to continue to keep the project going. But that was just a decision that was made, you know, by the board on advice of attorney. And that's how attorneys make money. They go back and forth about whether this is what, the best way to do it. And we probably could have spent six months debating whether or not this is how we're supposed to do it. But we decided to take a shot at it. Hopefully, we'd get a good turnout and we could get this done. Because I think there's a lot of belief, and I hear it in the crowd tonight, there's a lot of belief today, rather, that this is, this is, this is a good thing to have happen. And, and, and it sort of does help with the footprint. We've been talking about this publicly in Weathersfield. At least, I've been here eight years. At least five of those eight years, we've had these discussions. So it's just a matter now of having to make a decision. If we want to debate the Australian versus floor, I suppose we could spend another few months doing that. But I don't think that that leads us any closer to being able to do what this town has wanted to do for a while.
So when it came down to how we would proceed with solar power for the school, we entertained bids from two contractors, selected Norwich Solar. And then the discussion was, in the, in the process of hearing their bids, the discussion was where the array might be. And each one had proposals for off-site net metering. And basically, that just means we buy into a grid that they established somewhere else, to a solar array that they established somewhere else. And we sign a contract for a discounted rate on our power. We pay 85 cents on the dollar for every kilowatt that we buy. The choices were to do that with an array that's somewhere else or to put it here. And the financial arrangement was exactly the same. So the question then becomes, how do you decide? The, my first concern was, is there going to be a risk to the roof? Is there, does it impact the life of the roof? Is there any potential damage to the roof? Would, and, and so we asked those questions, and they answered them to my satisfaction, anyway, with the engineering study and the, the answers that Joel has provided here. So that kind of erased that concern from my mind. And then the other factors that caused me to at least believe that this, having the panels on the roof was the way to go, were the two other factors that are in play. And one is the potential for us to buy the array after six years or to default into ownership of it after 25 years. We couldn't do that if we just simply purchased a share of an array that's somewhere else. That, that option to own the array, once, as long as somebody else owns it, we're paying 85 cents on the dollar for our power, which is a good deal. But once we own it, we pay zero cents on the dollar. So it's a much better deal to own it, but we don't have the cash to outlay the costs. So the possibility for future purchase is a strong financial incentive. The second one is that potential for eventually having storage that would allow this building to function as an emergency shelter. If the, if the panels are somewhere else, we don't have that potential. It's not technology that is in place and the incentives and the legislation that's required are not in place now, but they're in the works. So as soon as, if our panels are on our roof, as soon as those agreements are made, then we're in a position to take full advantage of it right away. So that's kind of a summary of how I got to where I am in terms of supporting the idea that they're on the roof.
Questions in the back?
My name's Jackie McKeown. First, I'd like to thank the board for doing all the hard work of educating yourselves on this very complex project and using the expertise of science and the lawyers to know how to proceed and to offer this to the community. And I'd also like to point out that you have taken the effort to not just look at the benefit economically, but the benefit to the community where we might have an emergency shelter. And most important way to me is the benefit to the students who are going to have a huge educational opportunity here by having this on the roof. So I want to thank you for all of your hard work and learning. And thank the gentlemen from the company here to bring the science to us so we can make an informed decision. And I respectfully ask that we call the question.
So that's a motion to call the question? Okay, that's, that's not debatable at this point. It's simply yes or no vote on, on calling the question. So all those in favor of calling the question and moving to a vote signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Okay, we're ready for, waiting for a vote on the question. Thank you for all the participation and a lot of good discussions. Okay, are we ready for the question?
Mr. Moderator, I'm asking for a hand vote or a standing count, please.
Okay, that's fair enough. In this case, I'll, I'll agree with that. All those in favor of the motion, which is essentially to lease the rooftop, if you will, for a power array to be installed? If you're in favor of that, please raise your hand.
You need to speak. Can you redo that again? It's speaking through the microphone.
Okay, I'm sorry. So right now, we're voting on Article III. And I can, I'll read the thing again, just to make sure everybody's clear. Shall the voters of the Weathersfield School District authorize the school board to enter into a 25-year lease with Weathersfield School Community Solar LLC to lease school property located in 135 Schoolhouse Road to Weathersfield Community Solar LLC to install and operate a solar-powered electric generating system pursuant to the terms of the solar lease agreement and solar net metering credit agreement negotiated by the school board? So are you voting yes or no on that, on that article? All those in favor of that article, please raise your right hand. Can somebody help us count here? Yeah, just count off, I guess. We'll start on over here. Just one.
Two.
Three.
Four.
Five.
Six.
Seven.
Eight.
Yeah, put your hand out if you've, nine, over there.
Eleven.
Next?
Why, wouldn't Riley be 12? Riley's 12.
Why don't we just count? I think counting would be better.
14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19.
21.
22.
23.
24.
25.
26.
27.
28.
29.
30.
31.
32.
33.
34.
36.
37.
38.
40.
41.
42.
43.
45.
46.
48, 49.
50.
51.
52.
53.
52.
54.
55.
56.
57.
58.
59.
60.
61.
62.
63, 64, 65.
65.
Okay, 65. Is anyone else who hasn't, hasn't counted there? Okay, all those opposed to it, please raise your, raise your right hand. Okay, please count off, Roger?
30.
34.
5.
Rhonda?
6.
7.
11.
13.
14.
16.
Over here?
17.
18.
19.
20.
17.
Okay, so the vote, my, by my count here, is 65 to 19 in favor. Is that correct? That's correct, I believe. Okay, so the motion carries. Article III is approved. Thank you for all the discussion. Moving down to Article IV. To elect all school district officers as required by law by Australian ballot. Of course, that's voting tomorrow. Is there any questions on that ballot or anything? I think it's pretty straightforward.
Peter, may I be recognized?
Sure, certainly.
Thank you. There are, there are going to be two open seats on the school board that are not, nobody's on the ballot. That has been the case over the last few years, that it's been hard to get folks to run on the school board. So, so that's, that's out there, that we may have to, we may have to appoint unless there are write-in candidates who reach the threshold of flow. And is 27 the number of votes that a write-in candidate would have to achieve?
25.
25. So there's that opportunity. At this time, I, I want to recognize two of the folks whose terms are expiring. And I can say quite simply that they are going to want to spend more time with their families, which I, I have the greatest respect for. But I also have tremendous respect for the work they've done for us, and I want to recognize them now. Jackie Antonovich was on board when I came. She'd been on for a long time before. And I, I can't, people have come and gone from the board. And Jackie is a native of this town[1787.06] who has truly grounded our, all of our discussions. And she brings a perspective that someone who's just moved here eight years ago couldn't possibly have. And so I personally have a lot of gratitude to Jackie and we are recognizing her today with, in a very small way, with this certificate and a dinner at Weathersfield Inn on us. Thank you, Jackie. And as I said, we've had to appoint and one of the reasons we had to appoint was very sad because we lost one of our key members, Laura Cody-McNaughton, who died. And two people stepped forward to be appointed. And we chose Susan Hindinger. And I, my experience on the board is that every person has brought, I don't know, it's hard to sit up here and it's sort of hard all year. We're kind of in the middle of it. And so when people are willing to step forward, I think that's so admirable. And my experience is that each person has brought something special. And I can't imagine the last year on the board without Susan Hindinger, who came on and was appointed to fill the vacancy that Laura left. Susan brings so much skill and heart and hard work to this job. We're really going to miss her. And we are recognizing her as well with this certificate and a dinner at the Weathersfield Inn. And to demonstrate Susan's wonderful utility and hard work, I am turning over the presentation of the budget to our vice chair, Susan Hindinger.
Okay, so we'll, yeah, we'll get to that.
Peter will do that.
Any further comments or questions about Article Four?
I have a question.
Rhonda, come to the mic, please.
I think it's pertaining to the budget, but I felt this.
No, this isn't the budget right now. We're still talking about voters, I mean, the voting for school directors.
That's what I want to tell you.
Okay, you bet. Yeah, may I add that?
I work for Student Transportation of America, who is the leasing company for the busing in this town. Am I allowed to run for school board? I work for a subcontractor of the school.
David says yes.
David says yes.
So I am allowed to run for school board?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Write that woman in.
Okay, any further questions on Article Four? If not, we'll move on to Article Five. Shall the voters of the Weathersfield School District approve the school board to expand six million one hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year? It is estimated that this proposed budget, if, yeah. This is just from the town report, so. Thank you. There's some missing wording in here. The complete wording is on the ballot and in the official warning, so just to add that here. It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of eighteen million four hundred and fifty dollars and forty-one cents per equalized pupil.
Eighteen thousand, not eighteen million.
Did I say eighteen?
Not yet.
Eighteen thousand, yeah. Excuse me, eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and forty-one cents per equalized pupil. This projected spending per equalized pupil is ten point seven zero percent higher than the spending for the current year. That will be voted by Australian ballot on Tuesday. So I'd like to recognize Susan Hindinger. Right here, you're the one, yeah, to make a presentation on the budget.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. So my goal here in starting was to try to avoid alphabet soup as much as possible. I find that there are a ton of acronyms in education and budgeting and I wanted to make it as clear as possible. So I wanted to start with just highlighting a few ways that our school meets the needs of our students and their families. Special education gets a lot of attention because it's the gorilla in the room from a financial standpoint. And you hear, you'll hear the acronym IEP and you might not know what that means. That stands for Individual Education Plan. All of that is regulated by the federal government and the state. And there is a qualifying process, which identifies children that qualify for an individual education plan. Once that happens, there's a kind of a cascade of services that come into play to meet that child's, that child's needs. So that's a big part of the way the school meets the needs of its student body. There's a whole set of children that don't, haven't yet or haven't qualified for IEPs that still need extra intervention, that are maybe at risk. And so the school and the SU find ways to meet their needs as well. And so we have a program called We Are Hope. It's a contracting service that has been active in our school for the last few years and is, we hope will be active again next year to intervene, to help at-risk students from kind of needing more services and to help them succeed. On the other end of, in another arena, we have advanced students and we try to provide them opportunities to meet their needs as well. This year, we have eighth-grade students have the opportunity to earn high school credit for algebra by going to Windsor High School for that class. We expanded our food program this time last year. The voters approved our plan to reclaim our food service program. It had been shared with the SU through a contractor and it wasn't working out in the way that our school wanted. And so we reclaimed that and went independent with our food service program last year. This has been the first year. It's a great success. And the whole idea was to meet, better meet the needs of the students and the families. There has long been a desire for there to be some kind of recreational opportunities outside of school, kind of informal use of this building when it's not otherwise being used. And I believe that was made possible this year with an open gym staffed by parent volunteers. And that's a great opportunity for kids. We have a HIX, we're very fortunate in this town to have a fund set aside for use in the school called the Hicks Nichols Fund. And it's, it makes grants that, to bring extra programs, enrichment programs, all kinds of activities to the students and the school at no cost to taxpayers. And we have an after-school program, which was a huge need in our community up until it started, what, four or five years ago, for childcare after school. And it's not a school program, but it shares our facility. So those are some of the ways that we meet, that we meet the needs of our children and families. And so rather than have the same presentation as we have every single year, I wanted to kind of call out what is new this year that's changed, that has an effect on our school budget. One is that our poverty rate is lower. It's the second year in a row that our poverty rate is lower than it has been in the past. And on the face of it, that may seem like, that's good news. Our town's people are doing better than they have in the past. Unfortunately, it may be more likely that it's underreported because the way that our town poverty rate, at least as it pertains to the school budget, is determined is by the number of families who apply for and qualify for free and reduced meals. And if a family chooses not to fill out that paperwork and qualify, then they're not counted, even though they might otherwise be in need. And when the town's poverty rate goes down, all kinds of funding, federal and state funding, is tied to that. So for the last two years, our poverty rate has gone down and that directly affects our taxes because we lose funding for things that we might otherwise have federal funding for. This year, we expect to lose funding for our Title I math teacher. And our Title I math teacher is an absolutely critical position in the school. It's tied to our, our school-wide improvement goals.
CIP, yeah.
Yep, Continuous Improvement Plan, CIP, specifically charges us with raising our math scores and our math achievement. And we'd be shooting ourselves in the foot to live without a Title I math teacher for our K through eight students. So faced with that problem, the board and the administration decided to try to fund that position locally. If we can't get the federal funds because of our poverty rate, we need that position. It's not a luxury. Larger class sizes are a new, another thing that's a reality. Because our students, unlike many, one of the things you hear on the news is that school numbers or student numbers are going down in schools and we don't have that problem here. We have a pretty stable student body. Only once in the last six years has our number of students gone down. It's gone up. As a matter of fact, last year, we voted on a budget that expected X number of students and then eighteen more students signed up over the summer and in the early fall. And when you add eighteen to two-hundred-and-twenty, that's a significant number of more bodies to serve and students to serve. So we have so far, this year included, avoided adding an extra classroom teacher because that would reverberate through the whole school budget and cause all kinds of increases. It may eventually be necessary, but so far, we're kind of trying to find other creative solutions to the need for extra teachers. And so this year, the only other position we've added is a paraprofessional for the middle school classes because the middle school classes are getting quite large. There is a kind of a standard number, maximum number recommended for K through four classes on average and another for five through eight classes, five through eight grades. And we're trying to keep our numbers so that they do not exceed those recommended maximums. And so far, we have done that. Special education, we have a growing number, a growing percentage of our student body qualifying for IEPs. And those are expensive services to provide. They're important services to provide. But we just have to recognize that it's a growing, it's a growing phenomenon. Solar power is a new thing. Thank you for that vote. Either way, we're going to, we're projecting to save about fifty-five hundred dollars on our power bill in year one. And so that's at least, thank goodness, we have one thing to point to that is going to be money-saving. The food program, because Heartland and Weathersfield went into it last year together as kind of an experiment and Mount Scutney School District kind of watched from the wings to see how it would go. It was popular and it has so far, I think we've decided it's successful. Mount Scutney School District wants to join forces with us and go independent also. That's going to lower the increase that we might otherwise see with an annual budget increase for our food program. We're sharing those services across the whole SU now. The drama program is a new program that was, with a new relationship with World Under Wonder, which is a nonprofit right down the street run by professional actor Sean Roberts. Last year, we brought him in to direct our spring play, our school play, and it was very well received. This year, he came to the board with a much bigger proposal for a year-long drama program that included a Shakespeare play for middle school students, a musical for the whole K through eight school, some playwriting activities, as well as a talent show. And that's been well-received. I think he has thirty-seven kids in his spring musical. We hope you'll all come see that. And We Are Hope is the outfit that I referenced when I was talking about dealing with the needs of at-risk students who are not qualified for IEPs but may still need extra intervention. So that program has been in the past funded with Medicaid reimbursements to the SU. And in the past years, we've received maybe more of their services than we've chipped in. And this year, it's maybe flipping a little bit and we're paying more of our share of it. So we added a few thousand dollars to the budget for that. So those are the new things, I think. Yep. Okay, and so then when we're thinking about cuts to the budget, how can we save money? Obviously, there's a cost benefit to everything. How will a cut affect taxpayers? Will it make a difference? Will it move the needle? And will it move the needle enough to compensate for the loss that the students will feel by whatever it is we're cutting? Right? It's always a cost benefit. And so one of the things that we did, we've done a lot in the past year is look at our neighboring towns and what they spend. So when, either when faced with a decision about an increase or a decrease, how much do the other schools spend on library books or their drama program or their athletics program? We've done a lot of benchmarking. And so even to the point of looking at some of our neighboring towns who have recreation programs and don't run their school athletics program through their school but through their town instead. Is that a possibility for Weathersfield? We looked at it and decided maybe not to go there because it's quite expensive for the town. And then so just keep in mind, when we consider the numbers that we're talking about, we'd have to find a savings of thirty-three thousand dollars in our school budget just to save one penny per hundred on your tax bill. So that's like twenty-five dollars on a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house if you don't qualify for rebates. So in order to really make a big difference in your tax bill, we'd have, we'd have to cut, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or more. So think about those things as we talk about the expenses. And so that's, that's how we're spending our money. Where's the money come from? The biggest pot of money is the State Education Fund. That's the fund that receives our school taxes and then sends it, sends it back to us to fund the school. In our town's case, it receives our taxes and sends us more than we put in. So that, the numbers in that box show, last, the last year, we raised four-point-six million dollars in school taxes and we received five-point-four million dollars from the education fund. Federal grants, things through Medicaid, I couldn't even begin to describe the dark magic of that. But we do get money from the federal government. Some of it goes through the state and some of it doesn't, I guess. Grants, sometimes they're the exception to the rule, but sometimes we do get special grants to fund special projects. The PTA raises a lot of money for us and provides all kinds of support. The Hicks Nichols Fund I mentioned before provides enrichment activities and funds kind of startup or creative or new initiatives. Teachers' pockets fund a lot of classroom, a lot of classroom expenses, things, the extra things that they want to do. They just buy them and we're very grateful for their generosity. And then volunteers. In our school, last year, a back-of-the-envelope, you can go to maybe the next slide, a back-of-the-envelope calculation showed that volunteers saved us thirty thousand dollars of staff time, essentially. And this is by no means a comprehensive list of all the ways that volunteers contribute to the school, but we wanted to acknowledge that. It has a very real financial implication. Okay, next slide, please. So I'll just shoot through these last few here. The projected enrollments. You can see the class sizes. The elementary school, the K through four classes are on the smallish side, but too big to combine into one. So we couldn't have a third grade class that has twenty-seven kids in it. But we, but we can get by with a fourth grade class with nineteen and so on. So you can see the high numbers of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade in all in one class. Those will benefit from that extra paraeducator, regular education paraeducator. The text at the bottom talks about those, the recommended maximum class sizes that I mentioned before. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. You can see how our numbers have risen over the years. Um, F Y twenty is listed at three-twenty-four. We projected, I don't know, uh, twelve or sixteen, maybe less than that.
Yes.
And then the actual enrollment was much higher. So we're projecting three-sixteen for next year. But if another twelve kids come in the summer, we'll be up above, uh, this year's again. That seems to be the trend. Next, please. So as you all know, we're a town, we're a school-choice town still somehow. Uh, and so our students, um, have the opportunity to choose which high school they go to. Uh, if they choose a public high school in Vermont, uh, the town pays their tuition to that high school, whatever the, that school's tuition is. And if they choose a, a private school or a school outside of Vermont, or outside of Vermont District, um, they, the town pays the state's average tuition. It's a fixed amount. Um, the numbers for the different destinations for next year's ninth graders or this year's eighth graders are to be viewed with a grain of salt because those are just, they just ask the eighth graders in the fall, where are you planning to go to high school? Uh, who knows where they'll wind up. But, um, I don't know if you know anymore.
No, we just had high school fair.
Right, we just had the high school fair a couple nights ago. So, um, there's changes potentially pending there. So here's the breakdown, next, next slide. Here's the breakdown of the expenses that we, um, that we expect. So you'll see a couple of big lines. One is the first one, the wages. That's, I mean, the thing about teaching, right? It's all about putting teachers with students and watching magic happen, right? The, we're gonna have an amazing student, uh, school because we have amazing teachers and staff. Um, and they're worth every penny that we pay. Uh, the benefits have gone up. Healthcare went up thirteen and some percent. Uh, so that's a big increase. That's the, aside from special ed, that's the biggest increase in our budget. Um, the next, the, the, another big line that you see, a big one-point-something-million-dollar line is tuition. That's just the number of high school students we have times the tuition we pay. Um, it's a big lump sum. The assessments, I'll have a slide, uh, the next slide will be about those. Those are the shared services that we pay into, that are provided for the whole S U, to all the schools in the S U, that we don't do on our own. Uh, and let's see. All the other ones are kind of, they've pretty much stayed the same. So let's go and look at, so the bottom line there is that the F Y twenty-one budget is three-point-eight-five percent above the F Y twenty budget. We've increased our costs by two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars. So the assessments, that's the, those are the things that we share, the, uh, the delivery of those services with the whole S U. Um, the, of course, the benefit is that we achieve an economy of scale. We don't have to have our own payroll service. We don't have to have our own business manager. We don't have our own I T program that manages, uh, our computer systems. Um, we don't have to deal with, uh, at, at the school level with all the paperwork and regulations associated with delivery of special education services. That's all stuff that we share with Heartland and with Mount Scottney School District. Um, another benefit of the assessments is that it buffers the school against big swings, unanticipated swings in demands on our budget. So if we get two new stu-, ten new students, um, next year, who all need very expensive special education services, it doesn't mean we need to hire ten new people at our school or, um, three new teachers at our school. The, the S U is responsible for deploying their special education staff as needed. So, um, it kind of, it buffers us against those big changes. But the drawback is that we lose some direct control. So there's a cost and a benefit to both. So we should, we, um, we achieve the economies of scale and share the risk, but we lose, um, some direct control. And I wanted to highlight the food program as an example of the town deciding that one of the shared services wasn't working and reclaiming it and making a go of it in another way. So it's not unheard of. Um, yeah.
One thing I'd just like to add about the S U is that it's not actually this entity out in space. Uh, three of, three, we have membership on that board. Uh, that this year, uh, the board members on the S U from this board have been Anne and Jackie and myself. So we, we do have a direct input and, and have sometimes been pretty hard on the organization, but always in the interest of making things as good as we can for as little money as we can. So we're part of that.
Excellent point. I, thank you, Sean. I, I suppose I meant by loss of local control is, is that we're not here voting up or down on the S U budget. Right? That's the responsibility of the S U board on which we have three representatives. The way the assessments work is that they are, are determined based on previous year's actuals. And, uh, we pay upfront. So your special education assessment will be X dollars because we know you have about this many students who are gonna use those services, then these kinds of services, and so we estimate that. And that, there's a reconciliation at the year-end. If the S U goes over and ends up incurring more special education expenses than they planned for, that, that overage is billed out to the member of schools. And likewise, if there's a surplus, the member of schools benefit from that. So, uh, that's the way it works. Uh, the, so special education is one of the assessments. Technology and the S U Business Office or the S U Administration, Administrative Office are another assessment. And the third one is early childhood, uh, program. So here are the projected assessments for this year. The early childhood program assessment went down. That's partly because, I think most wholly because, um, there was a position eliminated at the S U. The person who oversaw that, the position who oversees the S U early childhood program and the position who runs the early childhood program, the, the daycare, whether the, I don't know, preschool.
I'll help her.
Um, in Windsor, are now one position. So combining those two positions saves some money. The office assessment, um, is, you know, within ten thousand dollars roughly of what it was last year. Um, and the special education assessment continues to grow. Uh, so that's where, our next slide, please. So how does this all shake out for taxes? Um, here's how it works. We take our projected budget, six-point-one-five-eight-nine-seven-two million dollars. We divide that by the number of students. But it's not the actual number of students, it's the number of equalized students. And they're, uh, so there's a formula that the state uses to calculate how many equalized students we have. And that weights some students and some factors more than others. So the state says, it's a little bit more expensive to educate a high school student than it is an elementary school student. It's a little bit less expensive to educate a pre-K student than an elementary school student. There's a factor in there for poverty because poverty, there's some assumption that poverty is tied to a need for extra services. So there might be a factor that increases your number of equalized pupils if you have a higher poverty rate. Um, English as a second language is another factor that can, can weight your equalized pupil. So the state tells us how many equalized pupils we have. You take your budget and divide it by that number. And then you take that number and divide it by the yield, which is another number the state gives us, the legislature gives us. And that gives us our equalized homestead tax rate. Then that number gets tampered with. Again, we divide that by the common level of appraisal. And the common level of appraisal is the difference between the value of your property and the tax assessment for your property. Uh, and so the difference between what your property's worth and what your property taxes are based on is the common level of appraisal. And, and that gets factored in. So you'll see that if our equalized pupil number goes down, our tax rate goes up. If our actual, if our common level of appraisal goes down, our tax rate goes up. And in this particular year, both of those things happen. So that explains why, even with a three-point-eight percent increase in the school budget, our school tax rate is going up by ten-point-seven percent with this proposed budget. So that, even, even the equalized pupil rate is another, um, kind of manifestation of that lower, that lower poverty rate that we have. Next, please. Anne Marie, is this a place where you would like to come in and talk about, um?
I think, uh, I was planning on coming in on the in- income sensitivity one.
Okay, all right. So the, so what does the, what does the new tax rate mean for your tax bill? So this is, this slide, oh, sorry. We're on different slides, the next one, please. This slide is just a kind of an effort so that you can get some idea of what the impact on your tax bill would be if you pay a hundred percent of the tax bill. Turns out, almost three-quarters of Weathersfield homeowners qualify for some level of reduction in their, in their property tax based on their income. Seventy-two percent of homeowners do. It's on us to claim that, but, uh, seventy-two percent qualify. So these are worst-case scenario impacts because this assumes that you don't qualify for any reduced property tax based on your income. So an increase of sixteen dollars and fifty-one cents from last year on your tax bill per hundred will, you can see it, increase if you have a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home, will increase your taxes by four-and-thirteen dollars. Anne Marie's gonna talk to you about what those rebates mean, what that tax, um, those tax rebates based on income, um, look like.
Um, something that we really think about a lot on the school board is how our, our decisions are gonna affect the taxpayers. And, um, we really don't want to increase taxes. It's not our goal at all. Um, and especially not to increase taxes on people who can't afford it. Um, just so you know, if, if you file the two forms, H S one-twenty-two and H S four, one-forty-four, um, and you make below one-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-five-hundred dollars in house, combined household income per year, you will qualify for some sort of tax relief. If your income is below ninety-two thousand, your household income is below ninety-two thousand, you pay based on your income, not based on the school budget, but based on your income. And you pay four-point-one-fi-, I'm sorry, four-point-five percent. If your income is below forty-seven thousand, you pay two-point-five percent based on your income. There are also other rebates available. If you are a disabled veteran, you can fill out a form and you can save forty thou-, forty thousand dollars off your assessed property value, which helps your taxes. Um, if you have a lot of acreage, you can also apply to be in the current use program, which will also help to lower your assessed property value.
Thanks.
Susan, could I just say something to that, just quickly? Um, the Windsor Town Manager did a little bit of a study in Windsor and found that less than fifty percent of the, of the taxpayers in Windsor were filling out that homestead declaration form. And it could have made the difference of cutting the taxes in half, if not more than that. So it's really important, as Anne Marie said, you can go on the Vermont Tax website, you, you can find it pretty easily and just get those declaration forms, get those filled out. And it's really automatic. That goes to the state, you submit it, and then they pay that portion to the town of Weathersfield. And then your tax bill will be reduced by that amount. So the sooner you do that, the better you, you make out, once you filed your taxes. I think the problem is it used to be part of filling out your taxes years and years ago, and now you have to fill out that declaration form separately. I think if you go through a, a tax entity like TurboTax, I think they do some of that for you. But just make sure you're getting that done because it could, it could save an awful lot of money. And that is, that law is built for towns exactly like Weathersfield, where people are struggling to pay their tax bills. And, and even though unemployment is down, high-skill, high-wage jobs are not often available, and people are on fixed incomes. So that's exactly why that's there for you, so please use it.
Also, the forms are due, um, along with your taxes. You don't have to mail them in at the same time as you file your taxes, but they're due April fifteenth. Um, you can file them up until October fifteenth, but you'll be penalized a certain amount. So it's best to get it in by April fifteenth.
Thank you. Okay, let's go past this one because that's exactly what Anne Marie just explained. Um, and then I, I just wanted to highlight, I did some calculations. And I looked at, if, if our town, if our school budget is exactly what we proposed, but our equalized pupil number didn't change from last year, our taxes would be going down. That's the effect of that equalized pupil number and by extension, the poverty rate. A different calculation. If our school budget was exactly as we're proposing and our common level of appraisal was the same as it was last year, our taxes would be going down. The fact that it's been, I think, five years maybe since the reappraisal, since reassessments or the common level of appraisal was up to a hundred percent, I think most recently in two thousand and sixteen, that really is a multiplier effect that is sending our taxes up. Those are all things that won't change if we decide we don't want this budget and we want a different budget. That will not change the common level of appraisal, it won't change our equalized pupil count. Um, so there are, those are some things that are at play that we just don't have any control over. So next, please. We wanted to welcome our new staff members. Uh, I won't read them all to you, but please look through, um, lots of new faces.
May I say that, and what a difference they've made in our school. I'm just looking at all each of these names. And, and, which is the top one, our lead cook. Uh, I just wanna say, I wanna commend our, our kitchen folks 'cause they've had to take on this whole cooking-from-scratch thing. It, it, the frozen patties aren't coming from Cisco anymore. And Cliff and Heather work like twice as hard, and they've done it with a good heart. Hasn't been easy. Um, but boy, I look at all these names, I'm so thankful for all of them being in our building.
And then thank you to the staff who, uh, who've moved on. We missed them. Uh, and then, uh, thank you for your patience. We welcome your questions and comments.
Okay, well, welcome to the question floor. First up here.
My name's Mary Winter. Um, and to add to one of the, I wanna make a comment first to the, um, the list of tuitioned students. Your comment was that it's for Vermont-accredited schools. That is, you have not paid for Mid-Vermont Christian School, which is a Vermont-accredited school that you do have students going to, but you are not paying for those. Um, so I wanted to correct your statement that the town is paying for Vermont-accredited private schools, and that is not correct. I have a student, I, my son is currently going there. Um, and I've had two others, um, my daughter and my other, my oldest son did go there, graduated from there. The town helped pay for one year, about six years ago. I did not fight it at that point to contrain to figure out why it's, why it was only for that year and a half. Because at that point, my husband died, and I, husband died and three kids. I did not have the fight to fight that fight at that point. So I wanted to make that correction to your statement. Um, and then I'm not sure if this is quite the open forum, but I'm not sure in that high school, um, statement, one of my, my son is thinking of doing Hartford Tech as well, as Mid-Vermont. I don't know, that is still in the air at this point, we're looking into options. I don't know, um, how that tuition piece will fall into place. I'm just, I don't know if this is quite the formality for that, but I do know that that, in my situation, that's what it is. in my situation, that's what it is.
My name is David Russell. Two unrelated questions. One, it's fairly simple, I'm not sure whether the board, um, has considered it, but has there been any consideration given to robotics? There are grant funds available, I attended the state championships in New Hampshire yes, about two weeks ago, and at the time, they said there was a $200,000 grant that was available for the schools that wanted to sponsor programs like that. The other question has to do with unfunded federal mandates, a subject that has been a bugaboo for a very long time, at least for me, and that is that you are mandated to provide programs like special education, but the federal funding is always lacking. The question becomes one of how supportive is the congressional delegation from the state in trying to secure funds, because my impression is that they continuously go down, not up.
Yeah, I can answer that second one, and I think that is part of the problem, especially with the, uh, with the special education, which is a federal law essentially. Our state steps up and contributes about 53%. The federal government's never contributed more than 7%. Our congressional delegation in Washington has been supportive, but it, it, it seems like it gets worse every time. So I, I think it's an issue, uh, but, but it's, but it's clearly a, a, a problem. Luckily, the state of Vermont does provide some funding, but again, that's all of our tax dollars at work in, in, in this room. And I forget what the first question was.
Robotics.
Oh, the robotics, yeah, maybe Jean can speak to that.
Yes, I can. Hi. Um, at one time, we had a wonderful robotics program here. You probably remember Dave Lambert, he was our science teacher. And that was an interest of his, so during that time, we had an exploratory just on robotics. Um, as people come and go in the educational system, if you don't have that in your repertoire, then it's something that's not offered. I do know a student that we have currently in this school in eighth grade, his parents have taken him to outside, um, agencies and opportunities for robotics. So, it's, it's like a lot of things. We've been working hard to get a coding club into the school, and I know that finally, we're, we think this spring, we'll be able to get a parent that will start that. But like anything, it really depends on, is the expertise there? Is the volunteerism there? Are the folks willing to offer? So we recognize the importance of robotics. I do think there's an interest, we just haven't had anyone that can spearhead that program.
Thank you.
Ed, I guess this one's for you, Ginger Winberg. Um, I couldn't see, it's probably here somewhere, but the special ed reimbursement, where does it appear in the budget that we get back?
Uh, when we... Because all the special ed, uh, costs are at the SU, how it works is we develop a budget at the supervisory union, and at the supervisory union, how we develop that budget is the service plan gets submitted to the state. That service plan is then calculated by the state on the basis of how much money we can expect to get back in reimbursement. And when I get that figure, I then take the total amount of the budget, and I subtract what the state's reimbursement's going to be, and then that, that, the balance left is what I assess back to the schools. So any state reimbursement doesn't come to the schools anymore, it comes to the SU because that's the way the state's designed the system.
Okay. On page, Ginger, sorry, on page 44 of your town report.
Yeah.
You'll see the revenue from special ed, right? Is that right?
On the SU, SU board, yeah, yeah.
That's the SU budget.
Okay, great, thank you. My other question is, um, on page 34, under athletics. I think athletics are essential. Any kind of physical activity is so important. However, I question the salary here, I assume, now maybe I'm wrong, the athletic director. I know what it was, if you don't go back to pre-start time, not too long ago, the athletic director who was here for every game, lined the field, did all that, got paid first 500, then 1,000, and then maybe, maybe 1,500. So I see now, I think, if I, I could be incorrect, that the athletic director is getting $15,000, and then there's an assistant who's getting another 5,000?
That is correct.
If that's correct, I'm upset about that. And then on page 34, what is that, 27,600? I'm not sure, probably a sum of several, from several places?
Yeah, I've got that breakdown, I'm just looking for it right now. I had that written out, I'm just looking for it to be sure. Yeah.
Yeah, coaches for 7,600, I'm listening ahead.
Yes, correct.
Coaches, how much are they getting paid, the coaches? The total amount is 7,600 in the budget.
That's four.
For all of the coaches, and that would be K-8.
So coaches get paid now?
Five, eight, that's correct, because the coaches for the primary, K-4 volunteer, that is correct.
Okay.
Thank you, BJ. Officials are 5,000, supplies 5,000, transportation is 3,000, and then the, and then the stipends would be 15 and 5.
Could, could you justify that, please? Could you explain that to the taxpayers? Because there are a lot of people that are ticked off about that, and they're ready to vote down the budget just because of that.
About the athletic director's salary?
Correct.
Uh, I'd be delighted to discuss that. So, in my tenure, which now is 10 years, I think the first year I came here, Diana Day got like $350 to be the AD. It is true, that's, that's an absolute true story. I want you to know, though, in most towns, the town has a recreation league that is not the school responsibility. So in other towns, they only worry about athletics for 5, 8, if it's an elementary school, K-8. That's not true in this community. So the AD is responsible for supervision and providing some kind of athletic program for all kids, K-8. So that's a change, that's different. And we, in my tenure, which now has been 10 years, I've watched this thing ebb and flow. So we had an athletic committee at one time that was very instrumental in policymaking and working with coaches and the AD. And then that, disbanded for whatever reason, I don't recall exactly why, but then that committee left. And so what happened, we had several ADs, and I can na, I'm not gonna name them unless you ask me, but I can tell you who they are, who came in when the salary was, I can think of two, one came in at 10,000 with an assistant, and then the second one came in with 10,000 and assistant, and they both said, "It's too much work." There's all kinds of organization, they have to attend the Upper Valley coaches, whatever, to schedule all the various tournament games and regular games, and then attendance here at the games, and dealing with disgruntled parents, and a variety of issues. So actually, last year, this board, I thought was very thoughtful, we had a barrage of problems that occurred right around basketball season, and it was bang, bing, bang. We just had a huge, a lot of different issues around athletics. So we actually engaged in conversation about shutting it down. We didn't have enough kids for some teams, uh, we thought maybe it was best, yeah, also for the qualified AD. So we debated not having an athletic director, we debated not having athletics here in our home school. That was a thoughtful discussion. So then we decided, we'll try it. So we're gonna advertise it, and one person showed up. Four applied, three didn't show, only one bothered to call. So we waited all day, one person came. So when that person came, they asked a lot of good questions about time commitment, about budget, about scheduling. Well, we were pretty, I think at that point, well-versed in what that looked like, and we were open and honest. That person came back and said, "I won't do it for 10." So the board, again, very thoughtful conversation about, we have a choice here. And the choice is give the 15, which was required, was, which was requested of us, or shut it down. So again, we said, "Maybe we do need to shut athletics down for a year. Take a year reprieve, and then really look at this from another perspective." In the end, we decided, as a, a school board, and I certainly supported it, and David did too, and that was, we wanna build the program. We want our kids here at home. And I will tell you, I do have the numbers in front of me. Last year at this time, we had 65 kids participate in basketball. This year, we had 75, and we didn't even have enough to field some teams. We ran about the same numbers in soccer from last year to this year. We've got some parent volunteers that amaze me, the time and the commitment. I don't know if he's in the room, I'm gonna embarrass him. And that's Brian Ellinwood, who's got a first-grade child and a third-grade child, and he decided that he would do the basketball for the 3-4. However, he heard that we couldn't find a coach for 7th and 8th grade, and it's not really boys, I've got a couple girls that play too. So it's a mixed team. Here's a, a young father who has, who's very busy in his own life, who attends his daughter's Saturday practices, and then he's coaching his son's team, and he says, "I'll step up. I will be the coach for 7th and 8th grade." I was, I think that was a heartfelt decision he made as a community member to support this school and to support kids. And when that happened for me, I thought, "We made a good decision about keeping this program going." So that's a personal story that I share with you, but yes, it's gone in my tenure from $350 to 10,000 to 15. And maybe the bigger question should we be asking ourselves is, should we shut it down? Our enrollment's going up. Should we shut it down and let our kids go somewhere else? Let them go to Windsor? Let them go to Springfield? Because when we don't host a team, Ginger, they have choice, and that splits our kids up.
May I add also that it would eliminate the opportunity to participate for kids who don't have the luxury of parents who can, who have the time or the opportunity to take their kids to other towns.
I agree, uh, and parents, like Brian, are the backbone of our athletic program. They always have been. It, it's amazing, but that's what parents do, that's, that's what they, that's why this town's so great.
That is true.
But I still think this is an exorbitant amount, and I'm sorry that this person requires this, but I hope that they are at every game, doing everything they're supposed to.
Yes.
I've heard about some of the teams that we can't feel, field, because there aren't enough kids involved. I don't know about that, I'm not here. But anyway, I just wanted to voice my opinion. I think it's nuts, $20,000 for athletic director.
I do have some testimony that apparently was written, and I did not see it in my email, but it went to BJ, God bless her, and she said to me today, "Did you see that email that came in?" Actually, it came in at 10:20 last night, I was long asleep, BJ. But BJ handed it to me, and I'd be happy, I'm not gonna read it, but there's three different testimonies about what a difference athletics has made in this school, in the lives of children, for coaches' families, and I'd be happy to share this with anyone.
No doubt that it makes a huge difference, I totally agree with that. Okay, thank you.
Next question.
I'm Anne Marie Christensen, I'm the state representative for, representing Weathersfield. And just on the equalized pupil rate, there's a lot of movement in the state house saying it's sort of unfair and not up to date, so there's a push to look at that weighting, the weighting of pupils, which, as you said, came to increase our tax rate. So, just to let you know, it's on not only our radar, but a lot of towns and states.
I think there's a public hearing, actually, uh, there's public testimony on March 11th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM in the Senate Education Committee on that very topic.
Okay.
Next question.
I just wanna preface this by saying, I know it's really hard to be on the school board, and...
I don't think so.
Oh, Sarah, nation arrow. And, uh, I've never voted down a school budget before, but unfortunately, I think I'm gonna do it this year.
You can't hear me?
Yeah, Rick, just be quiet. There you go.
Okay, um, I just wanna say that I appreciate, what I thank this job being on the school board is, and so that is tough. And, um, my children went to this school, and the test scores of Weathersfield were great enough to, um, finance their education, so I am committed to the school, and I've never voted the school budget down before, but I'm kinda horrified by this one, so I just wanna, uh, give a few facts here about our 1.80 tax rate, school tax rate, which is the same as Norwich, by the way. And, uh, the median income in Norwich is, I did my homework here, 110,000 dollars, and the median income in Weathersfield is 62,000 dollars, and if you're over 65, it's 35,000. If you look at the delinquency rate on the page I drew, it's pretty horrendous. There's a lot of people who feel that are feeling a tight pin in their taxes, and I feel for those community members. So, something needs to be done here, I don't think this is sustainable, and I think it's time to think out of the box, I don't really know what that's gonna look like. Uh, but, I'm just, I'm just also kind of appalled by the test scores, which are slanted if you look at the, because we're saying 35% are at, uh...
Their highest.
Standard or above, but I, I also do the math, and the test scores here are pretty, pretty dismal.
I, I would just like to mention that I believe we ranked 30th in the state of Vermont for test scores. So when you look at it from that perspective, our test scores are the highest in the supervisory union, and some of the highest in the state of Vermont.
Well, 50% below standard, 60 below standard, 52 below standard, 52 below standard, yeah, that, those aren't good. 79% did not meet expectations for the new science assessment.
First year.
19% of the same cohort went down in grade four from grade three. So those, those are not stellar, I don't think. And, uh, I don't know, I don't, I think we need to address some of these issues, about meeting kids' needs, which is great, but they, what they really need is some education. We have to meet that priority. So, anyway, that's, that's my statement.
Sir, sir, if you could wait a minute, there's people in the back that wanna speak.
He's just fixing the mic.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to just say one thing, because that was a good point, that median income between Norwich and Weathersfield, the median income between Norwich and Weathersfield and the tax rate, that's exactly why that declaration form is in place, right? Because it's based on income. So again, I just wanna reemphasize what Anne Marie said, because what the state is trying to do, it's, it's flawed, don't get me wrong, is to make sure that Norwich kids don't get better educations than Weathersfield kids. And it's an absolute opportunity for equity, and that's, some people don't agree with it, they don't like it, but that's why that declaration form is there. So the communities that are struggling and don't have that same median income can still give their kids a great education.
Uh, hi, my name's Robin Tindall. Uh, I'm in support of the school budget, I think that the school has been doing a fantastic job of doing more and more with less or with the same, whether that's the increased needs of our students, um, whether that's the increased needs that society and all of society's problems puts on the school. Um, they're doing that with the same amount of teachers or fewer, and we have more kids, which is a great benefit, that people are moving to our town. And we want people to continue to move to our town so our school can grow, and we can offer more and more opportunities to our kids. Um, another example of that speaks to the athletic director. It's not the same as it was eight years ago, or 10 or 20 years ago, athletic directors now have to attend more meetings... Athletic directors now have to attend more meetings for the scheduling. There are federal and state requirements around concussion training that they have to then bring to all of the coaches. There's just more and more monitoring and regulatory requirements on these people. And to find someone who is willing to do all of that work for ten thousand or fifteen thousand dollars is going to be more and more difficult. Obviously, that's a part-time job, and it's something that they need to fit in alongside another full-time job. So someone also mentioned, I think unfortunately he left, he was talking about robotics grants, and how we don't have someone on staff anymore who has that expertise. But sometimes the point of a grant is to bring money into the school district so that you can hire someone or buy supplies that you need. Someone needs to apply for that grant. So I invite all of you to research some of those grants and apply for them. I've applied for some grants. I've applied for some Hicks-Nichols grants. I have failed on all of those. So you can get used to rejection when you write grants. But my husband and I have also successfully written some grants and gotten awarded some grants that benefit the school kids here. So we've written grants and have brought about forty thousand dollars into the school system. And that's both for the after-school program. It was a grant that started the after-school program. It's now fully self-funded and self-sufficient, but it needed that kickstart of a grant. We also wrote some grants to have some programming for cross-country skiing. And we now have about thirty kids for the past five years who have been fully outfitted and equipped to do cross-country skiing in the winter when it snows and not when it rains. But I invite you to find some of these grants. That's really a short-term solution that we, as citizens, just throw in and try to write some grants and see what money we can bring in to our community. A longer-term solution is something, again, that you need to kickstart with something like a full-time grant writer. And there are communities around us who have full-time grant writers. I believe that we have someone in the SU office who does that as kind of a side thing to a much bigger job. But many school districts have full-time grant writers, and they more than pay for themselves. But that's something that would have to go in the budget in the future, and we would have to be able to be willing to pay for that, and then it would pay us back. Because we'd be able to bring those opportunities, like coding and like robotics, with people who we could pay, who are experts in those areas, to bring that expertise to our kids.
Jessica Brand, just to piggyback off of Ginger's comment about athletics, as everybody knows, we are very involved in athletics through the school, but I do have some concerns regarding the athletics and their budget. So seventy-six hundred dollars, you're saying, is a stipend for coaches through five through eight, correct?
That's.
Okay, so it's like, what, thirteen coaches? Does only head coaches get that stipend? So they're getting paid over five hundred dollars to coach one season?
Do you recall the exact amount? It is different by season, yes. That's what we budgeted, that's not always expended. In other words, Jessica, if we can't find a coach, or if we don't have enough kids that can make up a team, then that money, pardon me, that money is not touched. That remains in the budget.
Okay. So what happens, so basketball season, it was costing us ten dollars, which is totally cheap, but it went up to double the price to register. Where does that money go that we pay when we register to play, pay, play every sport?
All of that money, and that's, is that that new electronic system Jessica Kisco set up?
We paid five dollars previously. For the last six years, I've paid five dollars for every sport. This year, it did go up to ten dollars, which I'm completely fine with that. I mean, that's pretty cheap to play a sport, but in the online thing, charges you to use the online system.
Right, that's true. So I will tell you that any money that is raised through athletics goes back into athletics. That doesn't go in anybody's pocket. So money is used to buy more balls, more equipment, pennies, whatever is needed for the season. So that money goes right back into the program.
Okay. So then, I've also heard that the last few years, we've been over budget. So I was told that this year, we were over budget, all of our teams could not play more than one tournament for basketball. Is there a reason behind that?
I do not know the answer to that, and that's the first time I've heard that. So would you repeat that?
Yes, there's three, at least three sports, basketball tournaments that are going on, Lubbock and Parma and Windsor. And I was told that in order to play more than one tournament, our players would have to pay out of pocket to attend more than one tournament, because we have been over budget.
So I'm going to look into that. I know Jessica Kisco's in Colorado for the next week. BJ and I will examine that, and we will get back to you personally with an answer.
Great. And then just sort of to piggyback on to Ginger, too, you know, how we were at three hundred and fifty dollars for an athletic director, now we're up to fifteen thousand. I've had a kid in school for six years now, plus I was in this Weathersfield school and volunteered before I had kids. I will say that I have not seen a tremendous difference from our sports, from when we were paying somebody three hundred and fifty dollars to versus paying fifteen thousand. Just to put that out there.
Just got to find that person willing to do it for three fifty, so.
It's not an easy job, but I just want to say, I've had somebody doing it for three hundred and fifty, so it's just a good job, somebody for fifteen thousand.
Yeah, I know. I've watched some good people get burnt out real, real fast, but if you know anybody, part of the problem is when you don't have competition, you can't, you can't offer, you know, so, and so we've been just trying to find people to do it.
Next question.
Hi, Rhonda Bearbrier, again. I'm not sure if this is something appropriate to speak at this time, but as a taxpayer, I find it very appropriate. On two separate occasions, I was dispatched by our busing company to show up here for basketball trips that had been canceled. Each time my bus leaves my yard, I'm guaranteed two hours. So I was paid for four hours worth of driving that I never did a trip for because our busing company was not notified.
You are correct. And that was, remember, our A.D. had never been an A.D. before, so she was new in the position. You were charged, we were charged for that, and we paid for that. And then I made sure to meet with the A.D. to let her know that that was unacceptable. That is her responsibility, and I don't believe it happened a third time, once it came to my attention. And being new and having all those balls in the air, she was very apologetic. It was not something she really had a handle on. But like all of us, we have a learning curve, Rhonda. We paid those bills, as we should, and that's not a mistake that I will allow again.
Thank you.
Other questions on the budget? No more questions. Okay, then we'll let that one go. Boarding on that will be on Tuesday. And the final article is to transact any, any other business which may probably come before the meeting. So anything that needs, any proceedings anyone wants to be announced, we'll look at it. Okay, all right. BJ, first, coming in.
Peter, just want to give out a shout to you for being such a great moderator. What a pleasure working with you for the eight years. We will miss you. Thank you, Peter.
I just want to give a really quick update. I'll do a more comprehensive one at town meeting. But things that are of concern for the schools is the schools finally have to fatigue on passing new laws, and what they're trying to do is finesse, especially the pre-universal pre-K. There's attempts to clarify the oversight, it's now by the oversight of the Agency of Education and the Department of Human Services because of childcare and the school portion. And they're trying to get rules together. So they're, they're pretty much working on that stuff. Paid family leave, which was a big disappointment to me, but it failed to override by just one vote, and we did pass minimum wage. Let me see. We overrode the governor's veto. We have done some global warming solutions to come up with an action plan for climate change and how our planet is changing. The other one is cannabis. That passed the House. It's now into the Senate. I voted against it because I just felt the bureaucracy of setting this up, just, I wasn't satisfied with adding another layer of government. The only thing that, and now it goes in the Senate and they'll probably make changes, but as far as that's concerned for the town is, there would have to be a town-wide vote if any retail establishments come into town. So that's one thing. If anyone has any further questions, they can ask me later. And the other thing is the coronavirus. Just on Thursday, the governor set, started setting up plans in case it does come. Is working the fine line of, are we overreacting or not being prepared enough? So it's, it's kind of like that. But there are plans, and how it affects this is, if it did come to Vermont, a sweeping pandemic. The large group settings, people should be prepared to be quarantined, but also, they may, it may affect schools and not have schools, maybe restrict large gatherings, but we're not there yet. But the plan is going in place, and the school board will be kept informed every step of the way on this thing. So for now, just wash your hands, you know, but everybody says, "Wash your hands." And that is important for the, for the spread. So if anyone has any questions about what else we did up there, I'll be at lunch, and then I'll speak a little bit further on town meeting.
Thank you. Sean?
Quick mind exercise during lunch. Today's February twenty-ninth. Assuming we stick with Saturday town meeting, what's the next year that we meet, on February twenty-ninth?
Four years from now.
No using your phone.
In any case, this one, this date here is historic at this point. I dare say it's the first one. Sean, go ahead.
On Anne Marie's final point, the, this board and the SU board have directed our administrators to present at our next, at our next respective meetings, a review of our plans and policies for all communicable diseases, as we're aware, trying to cover every, every aspect of what we should be preparing for. And the last thing I would say is what you said, BJ, and because, Peter, I have tremendous respect for what you have done for our town, and if I grow up, I want to be more like you.
Okay. I think, is there any other, any announcements or questions or whatever? Before we adjourn, I would like to say, I've got, the town meeting is, is warned to start in five minutes, and obviously, we're not going to have time to go, all go out and have a good meal out in the AP room. So I will stay here, and just for the technicality, I will call a meeting to order at twelve-thirty and then immediately recess it till one o'clock, so, so you'll have time to take part in a good meal out there. So with that, a motion to adjourn would be in order. So move by Tim.
I'll second it.
Seconds by BJ. And all those in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.